Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September, February 23rd, the school committee meeting. It's now seven o'clock. We'll begin the meeting and welcome everyone who's signing in online. And we have all of our school committee members and all of them members attending in virtual setting tonight as well. So thank you all for being here. First on the agenda is open public comment. And as again, as we've done throughout the past many months, just want to bring to your attention the four submissions we had in our community inbox. We had two submissions from Dawn Harrelson of 158 Central Street. We had one submission from Aaron Coombs, 21 West Street, and a fourth and final submission from Neta Jury Penders from 2 Highland Street. So thank you for that information. As has always been the case, the school committee has been sent all of the inbox submissions and is aware of what has been submitted. So thank you all. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. I think we have two sets in our packet, everyone. Is that correct?
Yes.
Would anyone like to move the acceptance of the subcommittee, budget subcommittee meeting minutes from December 21st?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Tina.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rob. Any further discussion on those minutes? Hearing none or seeing none. I'll do a roll call vote for the minutes of December 21st. Tina?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Michelle?
Can I vote on it because I wasn't there?
Yeah.
You actually can. Many people abstain, but I think you can vote in if you accept them. And it's good to go. We're good.
Aye.
And me, aye as well. So four, four ayes unanimous. Thank you all. Next minutes we have in your packet is from January 26th.
I had one minor change that I noted when I read through them. And that is just that Ms. Jennifer Keen's name is not spelled correctly. There's no E at the end of Keen. So with that one correction, I didn't have any other changes to the minute.
Thank you, Tina. I had no changes as well.
We're gonna, Tina, God bless you. You, you find like so good. You're so good at the detail stuff. So.
Annoyingly, oh, right?
I don't have any changes. I don't have any modifications either.
Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
The motion, second?
I'll second. That's fine.
Second from Rob. Thank you very much. Welcome Brent. I see you jumped on board. Thanks for jumping on. Without any further discussion, I will again do a roll call vote for the January 26th minute. Tina?
Aye.
Rob? Michelle?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
And I as well. Five zero for the January 26th minutes. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is Teaching and Learning Club. I see some people on board in the screen here a little bit. I see Principal Diana Myers-Pacla as well. Dr. Berdos, would you like to introduce the Foxborough High School students?
Lower the lights just a little bit more.
All right. I'm really excited to introduce this teaching and learning highlight. And I, and I might, it's not expected, but Mrs. Myers-Pacla, I might have you jump in a little bit here, too. So our, we have two seniors from the Be the Change Club that are going to be showcasing a video that they put together. And I'm not going to steal any of their thunder and let them talk about that. But it's a, a video that is obviously very timely. As far as the club itself, it is a club that has really made some nice progress in different areas with different activities and things that they've done, and really to try to change things. So and when you think about the title Be the Change, this organization is about making change and bringing awareness on different topics. And our club advisors are Ms. Kelly Arkasha, she's the K-12 art department head, as you know, and Ms. Wendy Faye, who is one of the educational assistants at Foxborough High School, and they lead up this group. So I can't see on my screen if we have Wendy or Kelly there. Are they there? I see Wendy And is Kelly there? In the meantime, Ms. Myers-Pacla, do you want to just give a little bit of an intro to Be the Change and how that club was formed? Because it's not really a club that's been around for a really long time.
No, it hasn't been. I'm hoping that you can hear me.
Yes.
So I'm playing a little bit with the volume here. Sorry, folks. At least I'm not muted because I tend to do that. Good evening, everybody. I'm so glad Wendy's on and Kelly is on. We were expecting our students as well, but from what Mike was saying earlier, there were a couple of links, so they may have gotten linked out in the moment. But Be the Change is actually an offshoot of our Challenge Day. And Challenge Day, we brought to the high school a couple of years ago. We were two years in with it. Unfortunately, with COVID, things are put on hold. But born out of the Challenge Day is Be the Change. So for students to take what they have learned, what they've experienced on that day, and to really make a difference. And not just to talk the talk, but to walk the walk as well. And seeing what it is that they can do and how they can do it, and grabbing whatever, whatever the interest is, and whatever direction they want to go into. We were so excited. This group has been somewhere in the 60s to 70s, as far as the number of students, with other students flexing in and out of it. There's always your core group that is there as well. But it's really a welcoming group for all students. They've done several projects throughout. I did tweet out, I haven't been as good tweeting this year as I have in the past or in recent months, as I have in the past. But Be the Change actually did our Hallway of Roses as a thanks to the students, the staff, and teachers, as a Valentine's Day kind of idea behind it, but also just as a thanks. And they, the students actually made the roses. They're spectacular. It was incredible. The flowers there. And, oh, good, we've got the kids coming on right now. And so those were all hanging down along with some posters that were up on the walls as well. And again, just to say thanks. So they've got passions in many areas. I'm going to turn it over to Dominic and to Neha to tell you a little bit about this particular activity that the students came forward with and said, what do you think? Could we do something like this? And we said, yes, absolutely. And this video that they will talk to you about was actually shown at our advisory session last week, the week before, excuse me, the week before vacation. So, hi Dominic, hi Neha.
Hello.
Jump in.
So sorry, I just jumped in because I was stuck on the other link. So we're talking about the roses, right?
Whoop. I was speaking about the, the Hall of Roses, but also too, I just had introed the video. So jump in wherever you'd like to jump in. And I just gave a little bit of background to the club.
Awesome. Thank you. So first, we'll talk about the roses first, because that's more recent. So for last year, we did, we sold roses at the lunch to raise money for originally, which was for the Australian wildfires, which were going in that area around that time. This is last year, of course. However, due to COVID, obviously, we had, that was cut short. So what we did with that money is we actually redirected it towards COVID, because that's when we actually were able to donate it. So we decided to do the same thing this year and raise money for COVID relief, recovery, and, and to an organization called Direct Relief, which some of you may know. And we raised about, I haven't gone to the actual, actual number, but we raised about, I believe, $40 so far. I was just a random guess from what I looked at. But we, we've sold a lot of roses and we are, after, right now, we're currently selling. We sold at lunch last week, sorry, the week before. And we are selling on the walls with QR codes. So all that money will be going towards COVID relief and recovery, which is great, because obviously, that's still a big problem now. And we, we have, we, we can do so much to help. And we, we can't cure it, of course, but we can just help out by simply making roses. Neha, you can add anything if you'd like.
Do you like me to speak about the video?
Sure.
Okay, so basically, Be the Change, it was started last year, and we decided to focus on like a plethora of social issues that people deal with. And this year, since COVID was taking over so much of our lives, we decided to focus on that. Hence, the rose is going to that relief instead of something else. So the video, it was inspired by the idea that people our age, Dominic and I's age, who are in high school right now, we are missing out on a lot. But some of us, I feel like, have taken the idea that it doesn't affect us as long term as other people, like older than us, for granted. And so, a lot of our classmates have gone on to like, not really understand the repercussions of like, not practicing safety. So we decided to get a lot of the faculty involved so that they would realize that it's not just, you know, you're not just living in your own world. Everything you do affects the people around you. And the people who have helped you through a lot might suffer because of a decision that you made, because, you know, you were only thinking of yourself and how you would be fine in the long term, but others may
And then we have the video as well, that we're going to be able to play for everyone. It's about four, four and a half minutes long, if I remember that correctly. That sounded
Wuhan began last month, and on Thursday, Chinese researchers said investigations showed a new type of coronavirus was to blame.
Number of people infected by a mysterious respiratory virus has more than tripled over the weekend. There are now 218 confirmed cases of the new coronavirus.
A SARS-like virus, which is infected hundreds in China, has now reached the United States. They're fighting a war here, and they're losing. The sheer numbers of people succumbing to the coronavirus is overwhelming.
Breaking news, the first death from coronavirus here in the United States.
500 top health experts are going further. Shut it down now, they say.
Major cities across the country are looking wide.
Tomorrow, our public schools will be closed.
Today, more than 50,000 Americans have now died from this virus.
The number of deaths here in the United States have just crossed 100,000.
The country has surpassed 200,000 deaths from the virus.
The American death toll has now passed 300,000 since the pandemic began.
I think it affects people differently for different reasons.
It's been a lot. And, you know, I just, I don't think that this is a natural way, of course, for anybody to be behaving.
Yes, certainly. The pandemic has affected everybody. And I'm, I'm not the exception.
The family connection is how it's really impacted me.
I have three kids. They're in fifth grade, third grade, and one is still in daycare. She's four.
I'm fortunate at 50 years old to have a grandmother that is still alive.
What do we do? What's the right thing to do? Do we send our kids back? Do we let them go hybrid? And it felt really scary to go back.
I don't want to risk my grandmother's life or anybody else's life, because God forbid I ever infected them.
I want to keep my parents and my husband's parents safe. And, you know, I grapple with this pretty much on a weekly basis, thinking like, okay, is it safe? Is it safe for them to be around our kids?
The hardest part has been the flexibility.
We also cannot interact as we used to in the past and work in groups, do fun activities.
It's been difficult adjusting to everything that's happening. And then as they were told one thing, now we have to do another.
Pretty much on a daily basis that I'm like, eh, is this the right choice? I don't know.
Of not only being able to control things, being able to know what was happening next to having to do things on the fly and change things so rapidly. I find that difficult for myself. And I know my students find that difficult also.
But we're doing our best. At least we're happy to be back here in school.
Nobody knew if it was really going to be safe. And so far, so good.
There's good and bad. And we just have to take advantage of the good and just deal with bad as it comes.
COVID-19 is not going away. In fact, it's getting worse.
Even the force from your voice of speaking, there is a degree of aerosolization, namely the virus can come out not very far, a few feet and down.
I said that I think it's disrespectful of people not to wear masks.
Where that kind of transmission can take place.
You could literally kill someone because you didn't want to wear a mask. When you wear a mask, you say, I respect you. That's what the mask says.
Is that everyone at all times could stay six feet separated from another person?
Now more than ever, action by everyone is needed until treatments are available
Powerful video, isn't it, what they put together? And then having the faculty in there, too. And when we think about right now and where we are in the news even today, to go back and to hear those news clips, it really is just staggering. But the amount of work that the students have done to put that together, I'm curious from sharing it during advisory, what some of the conversation was with your peers.
Dominique or Neha, that'd be great. I was thinking the same thing. You took the question right from my mouth, was that, tell us a little bit more, if you would, about the reactions of your fellow students and, and again, during advisory or even just walking the halls under the roses. I'd be interested in what their reactions are.
Sure thing. I'd love to share that. I got many texts after the video showed a few weeks ago. And it was, a lot of it was like, great work with the video, great work with, you know, editing for Neha and I. And, and generally, like, the next, of course, you're going to go to school, you're going to see people with their mask, because it's required. But I liked, and I can't always see what people do after school, but I, we made this video to show people, this is what we should be doing. It's, of course, you, you walk out of the school and you, I see people all the time just rip their masks off. It's like, it doesn't even matter at that point, because you're outside, which is, you know, you're outside. But the thing is, this COVID is still here. It's not going anywhere. And it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's among us all, and it's still prevalent. But it can be avoided so easily by just wearing a mask, socially distancing, the stuff that we've been told to do for months now. And it's, like, I, my favorite part of that video is when he says, I forgot which governor it was, I included a bunch of them, it, wearing a mask shows respect. And you might think, like, I, this little flimsy thing, which, that little piece of fabric shows you respect somebody. And it shows, it shows you care about their lives. And you, it's, it's so easy to wear that. And that's why we, I wanted to show, we wanted to show our club about just doing the simple, doing this. That's all you got. That's all people need to do. And I'm, I'm in this general area. I see it all the time. But that's what we wanted to show.
Thank you very much. Neha, any other thoughts?
Yeah, similar to what Dominic said, I feel like a big part of it was the timing that we came out with this video. Because at the very beginning of the pandemic, that's when everybody, that's when fear was high. And I, I saw this thing, fear was high and cases were low, and now fear is low and cases are high. I feel like that's really how it was. And so at this point, like, we're kind of, like, we're not settling back into reality, but we're not on lockdown, like, we can go to restaurants. I feel like everything is starting to feel more normal. So it was nice to come out with it, like, I think it was December. And, like, we were so used to coming back into, like, slowly transitioning back into normal life, that it was a nice reminder, right when everybody was starting to, like, kind of forget the importance and the magnitude of staying safe, to come out with it then, and remind everyone. And so I feel like, like, I got a lot of texts, too, about just how, like, it reminded people that this is still like a huge thing. And like, they, you know, they just got reminded of how important it was.
Well said, and thank you very much. Dominic, I just want to thank you for the way you said it. And Neha, how you described where it began and what your thinking was behind it. I would say to you, in my opinion, that the, the powerful strength of a thriving high school does come from within. And when the message from the students is as clear as that, I can't begin to thank you enough for our entire school committee, community. We actually should have taped Dominic, your message should have been taped and put over all the airwaves everywhere. That's all we need to hear. The simple little thing to be done. So I can't thank you enough for stepping up and, and really staying to the ideals of Be the Change, to Be the Change in our school. Ms. Arkasha or Ms. Faye, any, any comments about their leadership or others' leadership in your club?
So I can say, I can say we're, we're super proud of, of the whole Be the Change crew, but, you know, Neha and Dominic, and these are some students who are leaders. Again, this is a new club. They stepped up. They said, we want to lead it. And they kept it going. And just the empathy that these teenagers have for not just their other students, but their teachers. I mean, we came at it, we said, okay, what issues do you want to address this year? They said COVID was a big issue. And they didn't want to just make the noise. They wanted something that was going to impact their students. So they were the ones that came up with, we really need to have the personal stories of our teachers, because we don't know their personal stories. We don't know what fears they're coming in with. So that was their idea. And just the back work for this, all the interviews that they put together, I mean, that was all on their end. The interviews, setting other students up, who's going to go interview this teacher, the questions, all the back work that went into it, not just the video that we see. So I'm very proud of those of them.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
What's next?
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's my, that's my question. This is amazing. And I will echo everything that Chairman Pearson said, and your advisors have said. It's amazing. What are you going to high school for? You're like becoming yourselves, and you are, you know, you're, you're trying to make positive change in the world. That's what we want. That's what the world needs. That's what our community needs. So I'm just curious, what are you guys thinking about next?
Excellent question. Actually, I just texted the group chat what we're doing next. We, like, like I say, we're still selling roses. We're going to plan and hopefully do that throughout March. Or, obviously, it was for Valentine's Day, but now we're, after Valentine's Day, we're shifting more into a, just buy your friend a rose, you know, it's show appreciation. It's a kind gesture. As far as what we're doing next, I'm excited to find out. There's so much we can do. There's, like I said, there's always something we can do in our community. Like last year, we did a lot of surveys, bringing awareness to bullying and racial comments in our school. That's definitely still prevalent and should be addressed. So that's, there's a lot on the list we can do.
Yeah. And there's also the Instagram. The Be the Change program is an ongoing project. Since, since lockdown, actually, we've spent a lot of time advocating for different racial issues on there. Because we felt like those were the two, like, as Ms. Arkasha said at the beginning of the year, those are the two big pandemics at the moment. So we're trying to get as much done as we can with COVID. But as an ongoing thing, we also have social media awareness that is pretty active at the moment.
Great. And thank you. Any other questions? I see a lot of heads. Well, well, again, Dominic, Neha, thank you. Ms. Arkasha, Ms. Faye, thank you for your leadership of leading the students. And Diana, to publicly thank you for your leadership of the building, to bring things like this to our building during the pandemic, you know, every minute of every day is about how we're going to get our kids in class, and how we're going to teach them, and where the chairs are going, right? Some things that are very difficult to manage. But to maintain a level of energy and focus on these other, I was about to say peripheral, but I'm not sure that's the right word, these other ads is a really big deal. So your leadership is profound as well. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to our students in particular and to our staff, because that's what we're all about. We say it every day, you know, what's good for kids and what's the next step? So our hats are off to all of them. And of course, the support by our staff as well. So thank you also, Rich. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you all for attending. We really appreciate you. Make our, you make our meetings brighter. Thank you. Next, next on the agenda is the superintendent's update. Dr. Berdos, to you.
All right. So first of all, we were happy to get back from February vacation and welcome our students back yesterday. Also want to really thank our families for taking seriously all of the travel advisories between our families and our students and our staff. We, we had a really good welcome back yesterday. And we know that it takes all of us. Clearly, that video just really illustrated that. And so having them follow those advisories and take it seriously and do what they needed to do by providing information to our school nurses, we're just really thankful for that. We're also happy to see the prevalence rate in Foxborough. We've just moved to the yellow, so we're out of the red. The positivity rate is at a 4.07%. So that was really good news to come back from February vacation and to see that our community prevalence is at yellow. As far as the next update, we received on February 11th, so just prior to February vacation, Department of Education guidance updates on transportation that came out. And so as you are aware, we have very limited capacity on buses with only about a third capacity. And that is able to get our students in a hybrid model to and from school. If we were full in person, that was one of our barriers. But with that change and the guidance that just came out, that has lifted the capacity limits on buses for elementary students. There are still other things that we have to follow as far as the protocols and guidelines, wearing masks, keeping windows cracked on buses. And if we were at a higher prevalence rate at the secondary level, then the limits on the capacity of the buses would not be lifted. And so the high capacity, the high prevalence is the, being in the red. So we're not, we're back in the yellow. But that has definitely been some good news to hear on transportation, because our goal is always to get students back full in person. And with transportation being one of those, there are many challenges, but that has been definitely a big challenge. As you know, we had amended the policy for the two mile mark to one mile. We, if we needed to go back, we wouldn't have to go back to that if that were the case now, based on this new guidelines. And that was, you know, with the Department of Ed, really working with their medical advisors, and based on additional information that they had with, you know, air exchanges and with the windows being down and those kinds of things. So that guidelines was updated with the Department of Ed. They've also let us know that in the coming weeks, that they will continue to work with their medical advisors to review all health and safety guidance for schools and provide that to us. We were surprised to hear today with the briefing with the governor and the commissioner that took place at two o'clock this afternoon, when they came out and stated that the commissioner is going to be requesting from the Board of Education, the authority to give him the ability for schools to go back in person, full in person, beginning with elementary and phasing that in. That's not going to be until the March Board of Education meeting. But if he's granted that authority, he would be pursuing a phased approach of returning students to the classroom, obviously, working with state health officials and medical experts, but to bring students back five days a week full in person. So I say that as that came out on the news today. But importantly, we've been working behind the scenes, actually, all year. So as you know, we had three plans that we had to have in place with being fully remote, being in a hybrid learning model or full in person. So when people ask the question, well, what is your plan? Do you have a plan to return to full in person? We do have a plan. It's the plan that was presented to you back on August the 3rd and was approved by school committee. So we have that plan. And just as a reminder, I think that it's important to think about, you know, as part of that plan, what's impacted are things such as the cafeteria. You still have to be at six feet of distancing. So the CDC even actually came out with updated guidelines in the last week and a half as well. What they did not come off of was the six foot distancing, even though the Department of Education has Even though the Department of Education has three foot to six foot distancing in their guidance. So we still do have that. I think that's really important to bring that up. Because if you're taking your mask off to eat, being in a cafeteria, that's impacted, obviously. Transportation, as we said before, was one of our challenges. We've removed furniture already from classrooms for space, but to be back full in person, if you go back to that plan, it's removing additional furniture that's there to be able to have all desks back in classrooms. You know, there's things such as students facing forward. One of the impacts, if you think about the high school schedule in that plan, where in a regular year, we would have a schedule where they would have a rotating schedule and drop a class. Going back to that, wouldn't necessarily be dropping a class if we were back full in person. So there's all of that. And then there's vaccines that are now on the horizon, which is the most exciting part. Because we've been waiting for that. We were frustrated, to be honest, that educators were moved down within phase two. And that was really a problem for us because we know how critical it is for our staff to feel safe to go back with vaccines. And by moving educators down within phase two, it's a February beginning to March timeline, but that's already being pushed out by that movement with educators. So we're waiting to find out more information there. I don't have any more information on vaccines for educators at this point because we're part three of that phase two. But the important piece is that the work that we continue to do all year and more so here most recently, because we do see what the research is showing, is that we don't have the in-school transmission of the virus. We know that it is best for students to be in school and we want students back full in school. That's our goal before the end of the year. So even prior to what the commissioner was talking about with the governor today, we've launched, we've launched surveys with our staff this year. We've launched an additional survey with them as far as a full return. We have a survey ready to go out to parents that will be sent out to parents tomorrow. And that survey originally, we were really hinging on some like of the transportation questions, to be honest. So those questions are still within the survey, but based on the updated guidance on transportation, that's not as critical. Where we're asking parents, if you don't have your children riding the bus now, would you want them riding the bus in the future? So that survey will go out to parents. It's really important that we have information and feedback from all of our stakeholders, from our teachers, from our staff, from our parents. Continuing to work on that plan that we have and seeing what the likelihood of vaccines are for educators and the other pieces logistically, which I'll give, I'll give a very simple example. We've moved many of our desks into the cafeteria in order to have six foot distancing. Those desks came out of classrooms. So those are the kinds of things that if we're back full in person, will half the students be eating in their classrooms? Would they be able to be in the cafeteria? Would we be able to accommodate all within the confines of the number of lunches that we have right now? It's much easier to cohort students at the elementary and middle school level than it is at the high school level. So again, as far as an update there, there's a parent survey that will be going out tomorrow to families and we'll be reporting back to you. Our goal is to have students back in person before the end of the year, if it's safe to do so with all of those hurdles that we are going over at this point in time. So as far as a date, we don't have a specific date. We need to get this information back and to see what are the other pieces of this puzzle to put in. The governor and the commissioner and the call today, they were talking about in the month of April for all of elementary. We've also talked about, you know, it's a natural break with April vacation and where we are there. But at the same time, we do have to remember that it is a renegotiation with our teachers association, with our memorandum of understanding, our MOU. So that's a piece of it as well. And I would just like to say that we have met pretty much weekly all year long. And we are so fortunate in Foxborough to have the strong partnership with our association that we do. And that's one of the reasons that we were able to get back into school in a hybrid learning model when many of the districts began remote, even though they may be hybrid now. We were able to get into schools and that was really because of the hard work and partnership and collaboration with our association. So I had a couple more updates here, but I just wanted to see if this kind of stopped there. That's a lot of information and for questions.
Thank you. Committee members, any questions? Michelle?
Yeah, I'm trying to process and I appreciate very much Dr. Bertos that that information. Because I think that that is very much on everyone's mind is like, okay, how do we get the kids back into the school system, especially before the end of the year? Because there's always, you know, that element of we're seeing so much, not just in Massachusetts, but across the nation. I really call it lack of hope, lack of trying to understand what the future looks like. And the more that we can do to let the students know, this is what the next step is going to be. This is what's going to happen. And I understand we've got restrictions that are coming from, you know, the state that makes it more complicated. And but I think if there's some way to have that conversation more, especially with the high school students, for them to understand what the future is likely going to look like and timing, the better. Because I really hear that a lot from not just parents, but students themselves. So it's less of a question and more of a comment. Because I'm just trying to visualize how we transition from where we are into all the kids in the classroom. And it's, it's hard for, you know, those of us not actually in the school to really see how it would happen. Thank you.
You know?
I agree with what Michelle just had to say, and I think that was very well said. And I do, I think I feel compelled to point out that the obvious, I guess, that we've learned so much since we put together the original plan for full in person, when we did our three plans back in August. We have gathered a lot of information. There is a lot more data out there about, you know, whether three feet versus six feet, how much of a difference that makes. There are districts that have done it successfully that we can look to and model after. So I think that having this conversation now and starting to make real concrete plans for what's to come is very important. And I'm glad we're having that. I'm glad we're hearing that now. You know, it's time. It is time to be really thinking hard how we can get our kids back in full time. And I know we're doing the hard work behind the scenes, but I, I'm encouraged. While it was surprising, the announcement today, I think it might jumpstart a lot of conversations that need to be had right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, Dr. Bertos, yeah, for that part of the update, I wanted to thank you as well, too. It also gives a good sense of our progressive thinking going forward. We're looking in place. We're trying to get to a place together with everyone. And we're attentive. You and we together are attentive. And finally, just to highlight the other piece of the puzzle was that you've mentioned meeting weekly with the union and I know for a fact that you and the leadership meet daily, weekly, whatever that means. So I hope we can reassure the community with what you've just said in that portion of your update, that we have been attentive weekly and daily to this. And we're not sitting on our heels. We're not sitting on our hands. We tend to react to the department because they do things like this, but we're there. So I appreciate you being in the game and being attentive and keeping us updated as well. So thank you.
And I think some examples, particularly if you have students at the middle school level. We started off at the beginning of the year with fifth and sixth grade where they have the two teacher team and they stayed in their classroom. And they didn't switch between, but seventh and eighth grade, it's a little bit of a different situation and they did a little bit more movement. We found after about six weeks, we were able to say, okay, instead of having the teacher move back and forth, we can have fifth and sixth grade move back and forth. But we still had our specialists when it came to technology education, when it came to art, those kinds of classes. The teacher was moving from class to class and the students weren't able to move. After February vacation, we've moved that. So we're making the shifts, to your point, Richard, that are, when we've, we've learned a lot and we continue to look at the data and the research that's there and make those shifts incrementally as we can. But at the same time, again, our goal is to have students back full in person. So again, that survey for parents will be launched tomorrow.
Thank you.
The other guidance that we were hoping to receive, and we'll actually talk about it in a later agenda item, is in the area of music and chorus. And we've not received guidance there. I'll hold that for that agenda item. Fall athletics, we have that as an agenda item as well. And we have Mr. Cusack and he'll be talking about how that started yesterday with our fall two season. So I'm not going to really add anything there. And if there's anything we missed from my notes there, I'll jump in when Joe speaks about the athletics for fall two season. So my last update really is that incoming preschool lottery applications for 2021, 2022 are now available at the Borough Elementary School. So they're also available on the school's website, the Foxborough Public School website. So if you look under the district information, you'll find Project Early Preschool and that lottery takes place on Friday, March 12. So applications are being accepted and that's for children ages three to five. I just wanted to put that reminder. And then at the same time, kindergarten registration is still going on. We've got some reminders up at the Rotary on the signs as well and have put that up on the Orpheum sign too, just so we can get some more visibility. Where parents might not have had their children in school yet, but kindergarten registration for the three elementary schools is taking place as well.
Thank you for that update. Committee members, any final questions for the superintendent's update?
No.
Well, thank you. I see that we have on the screen our athletic director, Joe Cusack. Welcome aboard, Joe. I know the season started yesterday, but I'd like to just start off by saying, thanks for taking us through two seasons already. I, I don't think any day or any moment was particularly easy or simple. Everything has been a challenge kind of right from the get-go, but thanks for being there and thanks for helping lead us to where we are thus far. So for you, Joe, fall two update.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. Everybody can hear me. Okay. So before I went on to fall two, I just wanted to kind of wrap up the winter. And I think it's super important that I told, you know, I told Mike and all the volunteers at Foxborough Cable that they were phenomenal all, all season long, especially in the winter. They don't get enough credit and they don't want any credit. So it gets frustrating to try to thank them repeatedly, but they do an incredible job and they really were the reason that, you know, most people were able to be involved in seeing their kids, their kids play. I would get contacted by people in other towns looking for these games because they wanted to see what was going on. So their product is fantastic and they just do an amazing job. And I just wanted to make sure I brought that up. That was the primary thing for me. The winter ended Sunday night with a girls hockey game and it started Monday afternoon. So we had about an 18-hour break between the winter and fall two. We played boys and girls basketball, boys and girls hockey, boys and girls swim. We got through a full season of each of them. And if you had asked me in December if that was going to happen, I'm not sure what side it would have landed on, but everybody did a great job. The coaches did a great job with their modifications. The kids did a great job adapting what they've been doing their entire lives to fit what we're doing now. Any of the issues we came up with really for quarantining, not all of them, but most of them were from just the timing of things, you know, for example, we play a game against the team. And then within 48 hours of the game, a kid would be symptomatic and get tested and find out they were positive. So most of it was a look back thing. It wasn't kids being irresponsible from our town or other towns. It wasn't people showing up knowing they were sick. It was just, it was a timing thing and, you know, we followed it. You know, we followed all this stuff as closely as we could. The nursing department, the nursing staff was fantastic, really involved and you know, we spent a lot of time working with each other and working with the kids and the families to get the kids back as quickly as possible and as safely as possible. So in the end, like I said, with the, the amount of games that we ended up playing, I'd consider it so moving on to fall two, like I said, it started yesterday. We're having football, volleyball, winter track, which is not indoor track, it's going to be outdoors, and cheer. Football's going to be playing at turf this season. It's a field's issue. We cleared the turf. So thanks to everybody who made that happen. It was done by an outside company of professionals. So it was done correctly and we snowblowed most of the track as well. And by now or by tomorrow, that should be almost completely clear with the weather that we're having. So it's great. We can get everybody outside and get them spread out. So football, football, like I said, is playing at the turf. Track's going to be training primarily outdoors. They'll be in the C gym, the little small gym for maybe 45 minutes, a couple of days a week, just to stretch or do high jump or things that they can't really do outside right now. Volleyball is being played now because we didn't play it in the fall. We could have, but so many schools in the league had their gyms that were cafeterias or classrooms and they just were unable to participate in the sport. So we decided to move together and moved it to this season. So I'm glad they're finally getting the chance to, to play. That's the only reason they were moved in the first place. And cheer, cheer has even gone through kind of a rule expansion today. Certain modifications were taken out, I think in the last day, which will let them do a little more, you know, what we're used to with our cheer team with the acrobatics and kind of the flying. So that's all changed, like I said, in the last 24 hours. So coaches trying to work on what, what they can do now as opposed to what they thought they could do. So that's great. That's a move in the, in the right direction for those, for those kids. The tryouts are ongoing or first couple of days of practice or whatever you want to call it. You know, it's all small groups. They're spread all over the turf, all over the courts. I was outside with football yesterday and today they were, they have about 80 kids. They were split up into five or six different groups, the two times I was out there. So groups by position, groups by age, they split it up as best they could. Volleyball's had multiple sessions of tryouts, trying to separate by age to keep the numbers down in the gym. So their groups are under 20 at a time in the gym. And I know in talking to Coach today, she's got everything segmented down into groups of three. So they're, they're really small. Sometimes groups of three will combine into a six, but it's, it's a really detailed setup. And track, we marked C gym, the floor. So the coaches talked because of somewhere to go. They know they're six feet apart. Like I said, most of the training will be outside. It's a 95% of it will be outside and then maybe they'll just meet in the gym to warm up or, like I said, just to do a specific event, only the shot putters or only the high jumpers in C gym at a given time. We'll start scrimmaging. I actually wrote in my notes to say we're going to, we're going to have a volleyball scrimmage and a football scrimmage at the beginning of March. And then I remembered that's next week. It's going so fast. So we are going to have scrimmages for volleyball. We're going to still do the same as we've done for the other sports. We're going to play the same school twice in one week. Football's only one game a week, so it's scheduled slightly different, but it's not like we'll be running into a lot of different opponents as we go. The plan for the track meets is to kind of mirror the swim approach, which was to do virtual meets. That's not to say they're not, they're not forbidden from having meets in person, but especially with snow on the ground, there's really nowhere to put everybody. So it becomes an issue of just the volume of hits. So it turns into, if you have a small team and another small team in the league, it's possible those two teams could go in person since it is outdoors and you can keep them apart. But that's, you know, time will tell if that's even something we can consider as we get into, you know, late March and early April, we'll see what the, really what's, what's on the ground at that point. Everybody's still going to travel separately. We're not changing any of our approaches. Everything I've said before about going into the seasons, the teams will travel individually. We're going to discourage teams from practicing together to the extent that they can. And we really don't want to have kids swinging from one team to the next. In case something happens, you're going to end up kind of erasing an entire program that way. One, one thing we changed for this season, and it's actually allowed by the EEA now, and it's, it's very helpful for us is that we're able to use the locker rooms for the kids that were in school during the day. They are allowed. The EEA allows them to change. If they were in school and they're going to an extracurricular sport, they can go in there to change. So all the boys and the girls locker rooms open. I'd imagine our biggest customer will be football because they have their equipment. And it'll probably apply to the younger kids. I feel like the older kids will leave it in their car, you know, just get ready kind of outside the field. We have, so we have the locker room staffed. We have, so we have the locker room staffed by anywhere from two to four people. We're keeping it a 10 person max. So it's a really coordinated thing to try to do. And it's been pretty easy so far because football is just in helmets and cleats. But once they get into putting on the full uniform, it'll be, it'll be a little more work, take a little more time, but you know, not be harder for us. They'll just be trying to get the kids out of there so more kids can come in and use it. But that's probably the major, the major change for, for that. The kids who are not, so the kids who are in the school, to clarify, the kids in school that day, bring their stuff in and can put it in the locker room at the beginning of the day and go back when school's over. The kids who are out that day, remote, can't use the locker rooms. They're not coming in on Wednesdays. Nobody'd be in the locker rooms. It's just how the, the rule is written. So we're going to, we're going to follow the, the rule as, as written. That's all I wrote down. You guys know, there's always a lot and I'm happy to answer questions. Maybe sometimes it's easier than trying to guess what everybody wants to know. So I'm happy to stop talking and listen.
Thanks, Joe. And I, I was just curious, who controls the snowfall? That was really my biggest question of the day is because you've now shoveled the field and you're right, you don't have room for track. So can we just keep the snow away? So I don't, I don't know what to say.
We try, there's a big, if you need some snow, there's a giant pile of it next to the tennis court. So if you want any, there's, there's a lot there.
Thanks so much. Any members have any questions? Well, thanks. That's good. Yeah, a great update, Joe. The, the changes in sports have been, you know, hard, hard to follow and stuff. So I think you've articulated them really well. And, and the other piece of the puzzle that we all have to remember as we do this is that we're fortunate to have this opportunity for sports after school. And our key is to maintain learning clearly, and I think we all know that, but these, these, the things that you're putting in place, who uses the locker room when? Who doesn't use the locker room? How we get there, how we space is absolutely critical to our everyday work with our schools. So I appreciate all that you're putting in place. And also I appreciate the coaches and the students that are adjusting to it because it certainly is not simple, but there, there really isn't a gray area on many of these things. We're just, we're just going to do. So thanks so much for all that you've done and all that you're planning for.
No problem.
Well, thanks, Joe. Great, good report. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Joe, for that. And let's move on. Thank you. Well, next on the agenda, we have the performing arts discussion. I see that our director of music, Kami Tadoli, has joined us as well. Dr. Burdos, do you wish to lead this off? Any introductions or anything?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So as earlier, we're talking about guidance that's been updated and, and we wait and sometimes patiently, and sometimes we start to get really impatient. And I think that this is one of the areas where we've started to get really impatient when it comes to the performing arts. The guidance requiring additional safety considerations that was released in the fall, it was actually initially released in July and then updated in October. And as you know, at that point in time, chorus, singing and musical theater could only take place outdoors. And when the weather was much more conducive to that, we were able to do that. Our music staff has been incredibly flexible and creative with their curriculum and being able to engage students, even when they were outdoors. We were able to put up tents in order to make that again, a little bit more conducive to being outdoors. And now that the weather is not conducive to being outdoors, that those updates allowed for things such as band to take place. Again, following all the safety protocols and procedures, and we've done that, that at this point in time, there's still not been any movement as far as allowing chorus and singing and musical theater activities indoors. We all know performing arts, it, it's vital, vital to our curriculum in school, to our extracurricular programming, and it really is part of our comprehensive programs in the Foxborough Public Schools. So not being able to have these things take place indoors has really been detrimental to our academic programs. And we have had multiple calls with the commissioner where we've asked about updates. The most recent call, which was on February 11th, I know I personally have asked the questions multiple times during those calls. And at that particular time, they, DSC had put forward a proposal to their medical boards to review through their guidelines to be able to have singing be indoors. We don't know what that was, but it was the specifics of that, I should say. But again, it was to be able to allow singing to take place indoors, but it was rejected. And they are now working on putting together a new proposal for the medical board, according to the commissioner in that last call. You mentioned that Mr. Tadoli is, is on as well. She, I mean, her advocacy on behalf of not just Foxborough Public Schools, but on this, on the state level too, really trying to advocate for the music and the singing and chorus to be able to be indoors and to have that guidance updated where it's been updated in other areas and not in this area. She wrote a letter to the commissioner for that. And we wanted to have just a conversation here with school committee because what are some other things that we can do to advocate for this needed update and guidance and being able to have this vital component of our students' curriculum take place indoors? So that's kind of the, the, the big picture there. And then at the same time, the frustration that we've had with not being able to have the updates where we've had it in other areas.
Well, thank, thank you for that. I, I maybe, I don't know if Kami, if you'd like to offer anything or, or kind of highlight a little bit of what you've done already. I do want to make sure we thank a couple of parents of Foxborough and Kami, you might do that as well, but just to thank Mrs. Ernst for her testimony today at the Department of Education during the public comment period. She was very eloquent and very clear, straightforward, nothing to be missed and nothing that could be missed. So she, her message was right on target. And Mrs. Penders as well has sent, been pushing the coalition awareness around the town as well. So thank you to both of those parents for pushing music in our town. Kami, if you wish.
Well, thank you all. I first just want to thank you all for acknowledging this and being willing to support the movement and recognizing that, you know, that it does need some advocacy. So I appreciate you, the, the committee, Dr. Burdos, that you've done at the DSC level and the conversation with the commissioner and in the town. And I want to echo Mr. Pearson's congratulations to Mrs. Ernst. She spoke so well and I, I felt for her. I couldn't imagine speaking in, in that room with all those people there. And she was spot on and she really represented Foxborough and just the music in the education community just so fantastically. So huge shout out to Mrs. Ernst and all the other parents advocating for us. I think, you know, Dr. Burdos hit the nail on the head and I, and I have to say, like, my heart is just wrenching as I hear the, the athletic updates and all the wonderful safety protocols that are able to be put in place and, and continuing to have our singers still be left out in the cold, literally. You know, it's, it's hard to understand at this point. So, you know, really, I think, I think we as the music education community, community, I think we're small, but I think with the more voices that are being presented, it, it just, it gains more traction and, and really encouraging the state to really look really deeper at, at the guidance. Because I truly believe that we could, we can do this safely with masking, with social distancing and all the proper hygiene requirements. And, and I know the, the HVAC studies that Foxborough has done, you know, to, to update our, our HVAC systems to make sure that our schools, the air is safe. I truly believe we could do this. It's just a point of the state saying, you can do it. And that's where we're at. And I would really love to see the state make that update. And again, I think a voice from the school committee and endorsing and encouraging that change would be very, very helpful and we certainly would be grateful for that.
Committee members, any questions or any, any thoughts in, in, of your opinions, please? Michelle?
I just wanted to say thank you so much for all that you've done, Kami. I think that that it, it's really needed and I feel really bad for not just the students, but the teachers and everybody within the, that community and how tough this all has been. And, you know, I really quite want to say, us as a school committee, what can we do to help kind of move this along, to move those in the state who are making these rules? What can we do to push, to try and push that forward? But also parents and other community members that are out there, what can they do? Because, you know, I posted something on Facebook this past week and I, you know, I had one of my old high school friends who is a principal at, down in Florida, who's saying, what are you talking about? Our core students have been in the classroom with masks since August. And, you know, hearing that just really, it troubles me because these kids are missing out on a lot. And what can we do to help move this forward in a safe way? Cause we want to be safe, but we also don't want them to feel left behind.
Tina?
Well, I mean, I completely agree with Michelle again. And, you know, like I, as I said before, we've learned so much since the start of school and through other school districts in other states that have successfully, you know, done things differently. We can learn from that experience as well, and I think we should. I know we've been asked by the parent community, Ms. Ernst and, and Ms. Mrs. Penders to send a letter from the school committee. And I, I would strongly suggest that we do that. I think we have an example of what the Sandwich School Committee sent to the, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I would fully support sending a very strongly worded letter, either signed by the chair on behalf of the entire school committee or signed by our whole school committee. I'm, I'm fine either way. You know, as, as a parent of a music student, I, I feel for you, Kami, because my son, Jack, you know, he's been playing in the band at Holy Cross for three, well, three years now. He's a junior, but this fall he was home and everything is still remote. And so he would be in his room, playing his trumpet on virtual band and I would cry. So I get it. This is, it's a huge loss for our students to not be able to sing together and not be able to practice together and not have, you know, Wednesday night jazz ensemble. I, I think these are, it's a loss and we do need to stand up and see what can we do differently now that, you know, it was understandable back in September because we didn't know. But now we know a few different things and I think the time has come to, to, to do something about it. So I would, I would be absolutely a hundred percent behind sending a letter to DSC. And if we need to go in and testify as well, you know, we can certainly lend our support that way.
Thank you, Tina. Hey, Michelle, I'll freeze to speak up. Kami, could you just give us a brief explanation of, of how the music activities are taking place now? I, I, I think I understand there's strings, of course. There is some wind and then the coral might be outside, but then they might go to theory when they're not outside. Could you just kind of, a, a quick, a quick snapshot of that, just so we really can understand the differences?
Sure. So I'll just say K through four is completely virtual for their music classes. So when we talk about the middle school and the high school, I'll start with strings, strings and percussion. So anything that doesn't involve aerosols meets the same standards as everybody else. So that's six foot distancing with masking. When we talk about aerosol producing pieces, so that's singing and playing instruments, currently there is no singing allowed indoors. So right now, Mr. Raymond and Mrs. Oberoi have just done a, an incredible job of completely reinventing their entire curriculum this year. It's completely different because they can't do the thing that they would normally do. So they've been working with, the one-to-one has been fantastic for us and we've really been embracing that. So Kirsten's been doing some songwriting using BandLab and they've, we started off with some bucket drumming and that was prior to the, to the laptop rollout. She's been doing some competition, composing, some poetry writing. And at the high school level, Mr. Raymond has done a musical theater unit, a, talking about the history of opera, studying popular music. So that's been sort of converted into a, a music theory course, if you will, centered around vocal music, but without actually singing. So that's really what vocal music looks like right now. And then at the jazz choir level at the high school, fortunately, Mr. Raymond is a fantastically accomplished pianist. So he's been working on teaching those jazz students piano skills. So that will be a great enhancement for them when we actually are able to return to singing. And then instrumentally, the students are at 10 foot spacing that is required by the Department of Education currently. And then a requirement of masks essentially for your instruments, which is meant to reduce any sort of excessive aerosols that have, that come out of the instrument, just as an extra mitigation effort. And then also the state requires a mask to be worn with a small hole in the opening to allow for the, the mouthpieces to work. And then when students aren't playing, we put like a full mask over. So when they get out of their seats, they're fully masked. And that's what instrumental and vocal music looks like right now, K through 12.
Thank you. I don't know if Rob, but you were going to say something or Michelle, whoever. I'm sorry. I just.
No, I'm just, I am acknowledging the ingenuity that has been forced upon everyone. So sorry, I just, I've acknowledged that out loud versus keeping it to myself. So sorry.
Thank you, Rob. Michelle, did you have, yeah, Michelle, thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I would be not only behind having a letter come from the school board, but also having, I think it would be more powerful having it signed by all the members. You know, because I think the more that we show, look, this is something that needs to be addressed. There's no reason that it hasn't been looked at and, and updated along with, you know, sports has been updated and relooked at. This is something that, that the Board of Education and the state needs to address. So that would just be my piece on that. And thank you so much. I, I mirror exactly what Rob was saying is that one of the silver linings in all of this is the ingenuity. And we really have gotten to see great things from our music department on how they've adjusted to all of us. So thank you.
Thank you. Brett?
I second everything that everyone has already said, but um, yeah, no, I support sending a letter. I, my, my stance in this whole thing is student safety first, but let's be, let's have some ingenuity, shall we? And I mean, we, we, we wouldn't be in school in Foxborough the way we are currently without a tremendous amount of ingenuity so far with the elementary model, hybrid from the year forward and all these people now clamoring to get kids back in school. And we're already, we've been back in school in a way that many districts haven't been for many months now. And, and I'll second the fact that what's been shown to work in athletics should carry over to music. And I've been along, like, I want, I'm, I'm somebody who wants to see the data, like, show me, show me, like, show me the risks. Like, I understand, but let, let's not live in fear. And you know what? Like our kids will sing in, I mean, at least the ones that I know, they'll sing in 20 degree weather. They'll sing in 10 degree weather. And if it needs to be outside, fine. But if it, but, but, but like, let's look at the aerosols. Let's look at the, 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 let's look at all the data. And we have, I think Foxborough is in a unique position that we have the faculty that has the ingenuity and frankly, the expertise to be leaders in this field. And I, I, I would love to see us push. And if Chairman Pearson and Dr. Berdows would support us putting a letter forward, I would love to add my full force to it for whatever that counts for.
Thanks, Brett. Well, well, first of all, I, I will say, I would have no issue at all supporting you as a full committee and offering a letter, a, a letter for us all to sign. So if, if you wish me to do that, we can kind of get to that motion in a moment too. But first of all, Cam, I, I do want to thank you. I've had a lot of thanks tonight, but I want to thank the, the faculty and the music staff for doing what they do best in, in quite the time. And I, I appreciate the snapshot of what's happening every day and I, I understand the snapshot very, very well. But I, I, I think I could add, without having seen it, that I think the kids are probably focused and intent and, and very much engaged. probably focused and intent and, and very much engaging in music because of what is their foundation they've been given. So, uh, as, as much as we are fortunate to have that foundation, we can't stop there. But I do think we probably have a great foundation for our kids to learn. When they're asked to do these unique projects, I think they are probably engaging very well with those and learning something. So, um, I do want to thank the, the faculty for coming to, to bear and, and really kind of being creative in making those solutions. My personal comment is that I've had a couple level, a couple conversations with a few departments that are involved in this decision-making for this, for music in the schools, uh, in the state of Massachusetts. And, um, I'm terribly frustrated with, with the lack to, 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 to intelligently bring to bear a creative solution that could be done. And my, my frustration is that I'm not sure they're appreciating what can be done and the control that our music teachers have for what are possibilities. So to make assumptions that A and B are going to happen no matter what, and that becomes the problem to make the decision is, is a far too great leap for me. So that means our chorus people can sing at lower volumes. We teach volume, we teach dynamics and everything that we do. I would venture the musicians are probably not even playing at high volumes. I didn't ask that question, but there's no need to when we're practicing technique and trying to control the environment. So, uh, I'm, I'm a little frustrated and disappointed that we can't get the, the people to bear that, that, that this can be done in an intelligent manner. I respect that it's indoors. I respect that it's in, the environments indoors are not always conducive to the exact spacing, but it doesn't mean it can't be done either. So auditoriums are big, many rehearsal rooms are large, groups can be split up and still sing, or whatever that might be. So I, I, I think we have to put a little bit of information and, and push as hard as we can, um, forward. So, you know, if someone would, I, if we'd like to do an official motion, kind of like we did a few weeks ago, right? Um, I would be happy to author the letter, but, uh, I appreciate Michelle's suggestion that maybe we, we get the letter authored and then we all find a time to safely get uptown and, uh, up to the central office and sign it.
Rich? I would just even suggest it doesn't have to be hand-signed, we can electronically sign it. Um, but it's just the effort of showing, yeah, this isn't just one person writing a thing, yeah, yeah, but this is, we're all paying very close attention to this.
Fine, yeah. Either way, that's fine. I'm, I'm good with that. Thanks for pointing that out. So do we want, do we want a formal motion for the letter to, to have it on the record?
I move.
Yeah, would someone like to move that the, uh, the chairman author letter?
I move that, uh, chairman of the school committee author a letter in support of, uh, further examination and interrogation of the requirements of, uh, music teachers, uh, so that such that they're in line with that of athletics in Massachusetts.
Thank you, Brent.
I second.
Seconded by Michelle. Brent motioned and seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion? We'll call vote please again, uh, on that motion. Tina?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Brent?
I'm an aye.
And Jeran aye. So that's a five oh vote. We'll offer that letter and we'll get that sent off. And, uh, Kami, certainly if you can assist us and Dr. Berdus, thank you as well to assist there to get that to the coalition or whatever support we might, we must, we might need to have as well too.
Absolutely.
Need to help. I, I, again, thank you all so much for your support. Um, and I think the last piece here is just, I think, I think adding that education piece to it, I think people have said to me like, well, you can't sing with a mask on. Well, you can, just like people say, like, you can't exercise with a mask on. Yes, you can. You know, it's different. So there, there is that piece of it. So, um, you know, I know your letter will be fantastic and I look forward to reading it and helping you pass it along as well. So thank you all so much for, for your support.
Thank you, Kami. Appreciate your time as well too. And thank you to, to staff again. Proud they're doing. Good night. Dr. Berdus, any final comments for you on music piece?
I, I, I think it's, it's all been really well said. And, um, again, Kami's leadership here and, um, Ms. Ernst and Ms. Penders and all of the other parents support. We've got a great, we know this, we have a great Foxborough community and they come out and they're supportive in so many different ways. And we're just really fortunate, um, to have them. And so again, many thanks.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the, uh, annual community report. Dr. Berdus and Dr. Mello.
All right. Well, I'll, I'll start it off here, but then I'll let Dr. Mello do more of the speaking because she's done a lot more of the, the designing on the community report this year. So as you're aware, this is actually our ninth annual report. Um, so it's been going on for quite a while now. It's also a joint venture between the school administration and the school committee. So it really is our joint effort together to be able to, um, a community outreach piece, be able to share important information about the Foxborough schools and to, to many stakeholders. So it's not just parents, it goes out to everyone in the community. And I think that's an important reminder. And it really originated, um, many years ago when we talked about how can we really share and highlight the Foxborough Public Schools, particularly if somebody was looking to purchase a new home or to move here and for a real estate agent or someone else to have that, um, document, if you will, that they could share. And then again, to highlight all of the many great things that do take place on a, on a regular basis in a, in a regular school year. Obviously, this has not been a regular school year and we typically have sent this out in late January. And we did have some conversations about, we, we're missing a number of pieces that we typically put in there, whether it's academic achievement data. We don't have that because of schools closing back in March. So, um, we talked a lot about bringing the information forward. Credit to Dr. Mello, she's like, no, we have a lot. I mean, schools are open and we have a lot to share and it might be a little bit later, um, to, to send this information out, but there really is a lot of good information and it's a really good reminder that schools are open. So, um, she has the draft that she has in your packet there and I'll just turn, I'll turn it over to her because she's really been the one that's been putting the work into this here.
Great, thank you. Um, Dr. Berdus said a lot of the things that I was going to say to introduce it, so thank you for that, Dr. Berdus. You know, as, um, she mentioned, this is an opportunity for people who are both familiar and unfamiliar with our schools to see, give them an idea of, you know, who, who we are and what we're about. And I know the school committee has heard a lot about the work we've been doing on equity inclusion over the last couple of years and how it's such a strong focus for us. So we thought it would be good, uh, where we had some data points missing to maybe add some new ones. So just starting on the front page, um, of course, we, it's an opportunity to brag a little bit about Foxborough High School being once again on the, uh, Boston Magazine 2021. And there is a typo there, so I will fix that. Uh, 2020, sorry. Top 50 schools, in case you're wondering, 38 was our ranking. Um, yes, we're proud of that. Um, as we move into the second page, as I mentioned, thinking about who's in our schools, um, pointing out that we have 30 different languages from 38 countries spoken in the homes of our students. And last year you saw the curriculum review for world language and just, you know, sharing with the community that we're one of the few school districts that does offer world language instruction, um, beginning in grade one, and we have continued to prioritize that. Also good, as Dr. Berdus said, if someone was moving into the community, it would be helpful to know that we don't charge any fees for athletics, transportation, parking, extracurricular clubs or activities. Um, and mentioning again that we, we have the Project Lead the Way, which continues to expand and expanded this year to grade six so that all students have that opportunity. So continuing that theme of equity, that's something that's available to all students, not some students who might have an interest in that area, but really exposing all students to those pathways into STEM that we know are often underrepresented, um, by some minority groups and by females. So it really levels the playing field. And I think the overarching, um, theme of, of the second page that you can really see is our schools are changing. When we look at the demographics of who's in our schools, that we can see, um, this year, our African-American community, we have 6.3% of our students are Asian-Americans, 4.7% are Hispanic-Americans, 6.8%, our Native Americans, point four, um, our white students, 78.4, and then a small population of Native American, Pacific Islander, multi-race and non-Hispanic. I think some people would be surprised at the diversity in our schools and our changing population. And it's been really great for us and it's really played into our work on cultural proficiency. In fact, we added this year as a new piece, we mentioned the different languages, our top five native languages, and they've actually been for the last three years, Spanish, Portuguese, Arabic, Lugo, and Uyghurati. I hope I pronounced that last one correctly. I Googled it so that I would try to get it correct. Um, moving on to the next page, uh, we did put in a little bit about our commitment to equity and inclusion, and it's always obviously been important for us. Um, we want all students to really mean all students and to have, um, the access and the equity to everything. We talked about that so much last year when we were closed and making sure that students had access to technology so that they could all have, um, the same opportunity for learning. So some of our work that I know the committee is familiar with is the committee work we've done around equity inclusion. We've had curriculum audits around it, we've had cultural proficiency trainings, we've talked about Dr. Colise Warnham coming over multiple years with us, book studies. Uh, last year we showed you, uh, revision to our direct, uh, district curriculum accommodation plan, which is known as the P cap. We've had graduate courses, we've had targeted professional development, um, on subjects that are very current. Um, things like really looking at how do we support our LGBTQ students? How do we support our English learners? How do we engage in anti-racism practices? How do we support student mental health and trauma and trauma-informed practices? And there's been so much ongoing dialogue about what equitable practices look like in our schools and, and there's always more to be done, but we're really proud, um, of our commitment, this really important and impactful work. Um, of course, this wouldn't be complete without, uh, mentioning the updates to our Borough School project. As many of us know, pages one and two are nearing completion, which includes our pre-K to two, and we are, uh, projecting our completion date and grand opening next fall, 2021. And I know Bill has been great about giving us updates about that project. We usually in this report mention our incredible offering, and I know I'm biased, but our incredible offering of AP courses. We have roughly 20 options for students, uh, to engage in, and we have an annual AP potential night. So those courses are open to students who want to try them. It's not just certain students, but it really is. And there is really, um, an array of courses from the humanities, the arts, sciences, mathematics. There really is a nice variety of there and we've continued to add. And we also have the virtual high school option, should there be something there, uh, not there that a student wanted to take? Um, as Dr. Berdus mentioned, this is a very different year and we thought we'd be remiss if we didn't mention that in this community report. And I've heard a lot tonight about silver linings and positive outcomes that we've experienced as a result of this. And I think it's important to focus on that. There's a quote from Albert Einstein, "In the middle of every difficulty lies opportunity." And, uh, Richard talked earlier about having to be innovative and come up with creative solutions. And this is what this year has been about. So just to focus, um, on some of the positives, this situation certainly moved along. Our, uh, technology initiatives and, and moving to a one-to-one, as we all know. And we were fortunate to receive the grant funding so that it didn't impact, uh, our budget in the way that it could have. Um, we were able to purchase our 2,800 laptop computers so that all students and teachers could have that access. Also added 100 Wi-Fi access points, which increased our internet access by 200%, which I did not know until I was putting together this report. Um, it's interesting that Kami was here tonight focused on the remote piece of the music instruction because other upgrades that may be less well-known but are, have been really key, um, are the addition of the smart music software that we added so that we can maintain that caliber of music instruction even when remote. And then the single sign-on capability through clever so that students aren't jumping around to as many sites as they had to in the past. So we just did a side-by-side comparison of where we were last year with student laptop computers and where we are now. It's pretty striking to see the difference. Um, and that's something that I think is a really positive outcome. And related to technology, and I was thinking of this when Jill was speaking, um, our partnership with Foxborough Cable Access has just been so incredibly, um, important to us this year more than ever because they've been able to support our engagement with parents and families. And one of the outcomes has been because we've had our, you know, open houses were virtual, our, um, parent teacher conferences were virtual, we've had virtual town hall meetings, we've had special education meetings, we've had, you know, special meetings to help parents support their kids through virtual learning, um, AP potential night, some of our regular events, they've all been virtual. And because FCA has been such a great partner, not only have we been able to broaden the order, audience and parents can have more access because the babysitting issues aren't there, perhaps childcare or transportation, so they can engage. But also if they couldn't attend at that time, most of these events were recorded and people could go back and be able to reference them. So I think it's really important that we, rather than not have these events this year or say, you know, oh, well, we can't do it, we have found unique ways to leverage our technology. Um, and it's really, I think some of these changes could be permanent because we've seen such positive, positive changes in the, um, participation rates that we've had. So, though, that's a very quick overview on the back, we always include, um, our recent college acceptances. I'm still in the process, this is a draft, so I'm still in the process of updating this. I want to make sure I have the most up-to-date information from Ms. White at the high school. Um, we always are very proud of the wide array of colleges and universities that our students pursue. There is a piece in there, um, above on Foxborough High about our continuing education and 88% of our students last year pursued continuing ed, 3% enlisted in the military, 8% entered the workforce and 1% took a gap year or an apprenticeship. So we can see that, um, our students continue to go on and be successful even after they leave us and after we've lost the high school. So I said a lot, I was trying to make up time for you, Richard, on the agenda here. So hopefully I did a good job. Um, and I'm wondering what questions or thoughts you have, if you think there's something that wasn't included that should be or could be, or if you have any comments.
Community members, any questions or comments? Thanks for all the work. Was that Tina? Yeah, go ahead.
It's me. So this is the ninth time I've looked at the community report and I, I honestly, I am so impressed with what you came up with for this year because I really, really wasn't sure how it was going to come out. And I should have had more faith that you guys would come up with, that you would come up with something really good, Dr. Mello. Um, I think it's a, you know, it's a good snapshot of what we've done this past year and who we are as a school district and as a school community. And, uh, it provides valuable information, um, to our, to our community, to potential residents, to all of our stakeholders. And I'm, I'm glad we have continued to do it. And I, particularly this year, I'm glad we, we are doing it and sending it out again. Um, and you did a great job of it. I don't, I don't have any changes, right? Anything that I can say to add, but thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, um...
Rob, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a terrible time without raising my hand versus just speaking. I just wanted to, uh, second that, Allison, uh, or Dr. Mello, excuse me. Um, I appreciate all the work because the, and the time that it takes to go into this, um, I think it is great to have this as a resource, um, to our community as well as to people that are looking at, at our community for, for a variety of reasons. So, um, I actually have pulled this out, um, from previous years on certain occasions, uh, um, for a variety of reasons, to talk to people outside of Foxborough, outside of New England about Foxborough. Um, so I appreciate it and, um, I, I look forward to it every year. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm really, this is very nice to hear because, um, I, 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 it's nice to know that something that's been, existed before I came along is valuable to people and that we're able to continue it and help it to evolve to match the needs, you know, that we currently see. So that's great. Brent?
Thanks. No, uh, Dr. Mello, all, all third, not second, all third, what you just said in that, um, prior to donating the school committee, I was on AdCom and, you know, their mandate is pretty far-ranging and so they tend to ask questions that are more global. And I can only say from back in earlier years when I had just moved to Foxborough that this report was a guidepost, frankly. Um, and then as an educator myself, going to different communities, I was asking the communities I worked in, hey, why don't we do this? Because I mean, this is, i- 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 I think it's, it's, um, it's valuable, uh, and more so than valuable, I think it's important for people who work in education to stake their claim, to say, look, this is what we've done, this is where we are, and put it out there to the community. Um, not, it's not a brag sheet, although I do think frankly, Foxborough has a lot to brag about. Um, i- i- I think it's, 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 it's an accountability sheet that says like, look, this is, this is where we are, this is what's changed from year to year. And the fact that you and your... And the fact that you and your predecessors, Dr. Baris included, have, have, have worked to make this a staple of something that comes out to the community as, you know, more of a statement in terms of, look, this is what our kids are doing. This is what the school district is doing. This is what almost fifty percent of the town budget is doing is, is, is vastly important. And, and, and I, in my limited view of the world, although I've been around a bit of it, it's rare to see communities put this kind of thing out with this level of detail. And I applaud you for putting out, especially this year, as my colleagues have already said. So thank you for your, your coaching report and for frankly for just doing it. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Brent.
Thanks, Brent. Anyone else? Well, great. Thank you very much, Dr. Mello. And it looks like you have support for all of your work thus far and getting all done for us. So thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Next in the agenda, superintendent's mid cycle review. Dr. Burdles, if you would please take over there, please. Thank you.
All right. So at this midpoint in the year is a time for really just a dialogue to be able to have with the school committee. It's a check in on my goals that were presented at the beginning of the school year. But the other piece that honestly has been the most valuable part of this was something that was started with Debbie Spinelli years ago, and it was again to foster that dialogue, and it was asked to really think about at that time. What, in, in my case now, what am I really proud of at this point in time? What am I working hard on and what challenges do I face? And this has been such a great exercise. I know it was for her and it has been for me for the last three years because it really does cause you to pause and reflect on what seem to be very simple questions, but they're not necessarily such simple answers. And then they cause such greater reflection moving forward and dialogue that it really takes on a whole new level as a springboard with our own administrators and what's taking place. So I, I say that this is the formative part of the profession, the educator evaluation system for me as superintendent. And so I'll just, if it's before going to the goals, I'll just talk about what those three things are for me, if that, if that sounds all right, Richard.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. So in answer to that question, what am I really proud of? You're going to hear a lot of redundancy here from other past meetings and from even this evening. I'm most proud that we were able to open schools in September when so many people were having a difficult time in opening and the relationships and the hard work of all of our administrators and our association to be able to get schools open. And then also being able to open and not just with opening in a hybrid learning model was the most difficult thing that we could have done. Honestly, it was. But to open with two different hybrid learning models compounded that significantly. It was much more challenging, but we knew that it's what was right for students to be able to best meet their needs. So honestly, leading the effort of so many and seeing them come together and we worked many long hours and continue to, to be able to accomplish that goal of opening safely. It was a tremendous amount of work and continues to be a lot. And as I'll mention here in a minute, but not being able or not having to go fully remote, that is an accomplishment. And I think that people don't necessarily know what a great accomplishment that that has been, not to have to go fully remote at any point in time. And again, it's because of the hard work of contact tracing with our nurses, with our administrators and all of the juggling that they've had to do with staffing when people have had to quarantine because of maybe being a close contact of someone outside of school and teachers pulling together and covering classes during their own prep period at times. It really has just been this dance that has been extraordinarily. So all of the juggling by our administrators, by our central office is, has been quite impressive, and that has led to us being able to stay open and not have to go to a fully remote model. At the same time, really thinking about our students' social emotional needs, not just their academic needs and all of the the things that I see behind the scenes and the efforts to be able to meet students' needs. Being able to deploy twenty eight hundred devices, not, not just in a single year, but in a matter of months in our technology department and the work that's been done to be able to move to a one to one computing environment. It's not as simple as handing a laptop off to students. There's so much more that's there. The outstanding attention to detail by everyone, whether it's technology, whether it's teachers, whether it's our administrator, whether it's our families and really thinking about keeping their students home. Again, there's just been so much that has gone on behind the scenes from our custodians, keeping our buildings safe and clean and all the extra attention to detail. The partnership that we have, it's been mentioned with Foxborough Cable Access already a number of times this evening. But again, our, our partnership, when we think about with our public health officials and with the Foxborough Fire Department and being able to help keep those health and safety protocols in place, having them as our go to resource whenever we need additional support. So I, I also would say that I'm really proud of our administrative team. We have a high functioning administrative team. And I will say, we've talked about some silver linings here for having such a high functioning team. I believe our team has become even stronger through this by learning and growing and sharing with each other the work that we've done. It's always kept students at the very forefront of the decisions that we've made. We've added two additional key administrative positions this year, not adding the positions, but from retirements and with having Corey McElazick as far as the new director of student services and Kate Campbell as the new principal at IGO. For them, I can't imagine you're not, you don't know the players and coming in into a new school system is hard work as it is, but in the pandemic. But the support that everyone has given them and then what we've been able to learn and grow with them and from them by being experienced administrators that have come to us from other districts. So I, I'm really proud of all of those things. As far as what I've been working really hard on. I don't think it's a secret. It, it really is keeping schools open. And it is going to be following all of those changing guidelines that we've had and having to be able to pivot throughout the year and adjust to those. At the same time, with being the first priority is safety is our students and our, our faculty and staff. What is out of our control at this point is the distribution of vaccines. And as I mentioned a little bit earlier, it's on, it's on the horizon for educators, but we're anxiously awaiting those for educators because the CDC continues to stand by the six foot distancing in, when we think about classrooms and social distancing, but yet the Department of Education has said three foot, three to six feet is safe with the other mitigation strategies. But we also know that one of those mitigation strategies is the vaccine. So we're really working hard on working together to get a full in person return in a, in a safe way and working through all of the nuances that we need to in order to make that happen. And as Tina had pointed out earlier, you know, what we've learned about from this year and what we didn't know back in August and September. So again, being able to return to a full in person model means hearing from all of our stakeholders. Again, working with our local health officials and going through, you know, renegotiation with our FDA and abiding by those guidelines. I will also say that what I'm also working on that's, that's really important. We talk about schools are open for business is keeping our focus on our strategic objectives that are outlined in our summary of strategy, our, our district, you know, strategy of improvement. And you heard from Dr. Mello, again, our, our focus continues to be ensuring equity for all of our students. And that is the main focus point of our collective work in many different ways. It, it really threads through everything that we do, whether it's professional development, whether it's paying attention to certain populations and looking for disproportionality when we think about student groups and our, our programs effectively meeting the needs of all of our students and looking at that data, disaggregating that data and, and looking at where we need to improve. So that continues to be the focus of our work. As far as challenges that, that I face, that we face as a district, it's identifying those equity or opportunity gaps, addressing those, providing the supports for our students from a social emotional standpoint, also from an academic standpoint. Also, the full implications of this year that we've been in with the pandemic are really unknown at this point in time. We talk a lot about the learning gaps and being able to assess for those. What exists now, how we're bridging that and supporting students, what that might look like for the summer and any restoration of services for students, looking at next year, looking at our curriculum, where are areas that we need to be able to focus on and bridge those gaps there and the challenges that might be presented as associated with being in a pandemic from a social, emotional and academic standpoint. Federal relief has come in the form of the grants through the CARES Act, and that is what has allowed us to move to a one to one environment and been able to fund PPE and all of the additional services that have been required by being in the hybrid learning model. There's, there's been so many more supports from remote learning supports when we've had to think about additional planning for our students with, on educational plans. When they're not in school for the, for the full time, but they're out, we, all of those services we still need to provide. And how we do that for, for those students, for those that are struggling, for our English learners. And then going forward with again, any potential summer academic programs for students that we've not had. We've had different programs in the summer, but how that will look differently this summer and planning and preparing, which obviously is a planning piece of that, but it's also a budgetary consideration as well. So planning for those unknowns now and in the future. So I'll pause there before just going over a, a check in on the goals for comments or questions on those.
Thank you for that update. Questions from members? Any thoughts? I see no hands.
All right.
Well, I, I want to first thank you. I appreciated the review that you've just given us on everything and I, I think it's important for all, especially those viewing this in the public to understand that this is an important opportunity for us together with you as the leader of our school system and us to monitor and be attentive to this and, and what we're doing together. But I appreciated the, the way you said something, and I, I think it should be highlighted because you've articulated it well. That although we've had energy and attention redirected toward COVID, which is a truism, with energy and attention. I appreciate you have mentioned again and highlighted what's in your goals. Your folk, you're maintaining focus on equity and strategic objectives. So energy and attention, true, time, yes, get all that. But it's important for people to understand that as our school system moves forward and still maintains progress and stability, we have to be attentive to these important topics. So I am pleased that you highlighted that at this mid year time for us.
Richard?
Tina, go ahead.
I, I was just thinking as you spoke that it, it's as though in a normal school year, our superintendent is juggling maybe four or five balls and juggling them well. And this year we've been thrown, you know, maybe an additional six or seven. So now there's about thirteen balls in the air that she's keeping up marvelously. But and I also wanted to say again, this, the framework, I think Bruce Gardner came up with these three questions for Debbie Spinelli and years ago, and it is, it is a very good framework at this point in the year to assess where, where you are and what is ahead of you and us as a district. And I, I think you did articulate it very, very well. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Tina. If, if she's still juggling balls, I'd be very proud of her resilience because I would have thrown the balls against the wall once it got to about twelve.
I'm not sure it's the best analogy, but it was what came to my mind.
Yeah. Brent, please.
I think what I wanted to hear most of you, I mean, characteristically, Dr. Baris, you preempted my questions with your thorough preparation as you usually do, and I, I appreciate that. I was, I was, I was curious what sort of flex you felt in the process because within the evaluation process, I above all want to empower district leadership to flex and to see what emergent challenges are coming forward and to change things. It's not about the letter of what you wrote in your goals back in September, but about that they're living things that are meant to help students and families and therefore the community. And you, I mean, I had five or six questions and you addressed them all ahead of time. So I thank you for that. And I, I really do want to stress, at least from my standpoint, there's one member of this committee that these goals are flexible benchmarks and they're meant to be optimistic, not deterministic in the sense that like i, 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 if things come up and, and you're doing what's best for kids and what's best for the district. That's what we need you to do. And it's not about the letter of what you wrote down, but that, 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 that that you're, you're, you're doing what's best for the community in, in the process. And that's everything I've heard from you just right now. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Brett. Dr. Burdles, anything else?
Just quickly as go over the goals since that's kind of a mid check in here. And the first goal is part of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, their superintendent's induction program, which is a three year commitment. And that has gone virtual, obviously. It typically is one full day a month for a content day. And that has been divided into three different Zoom calls a month, along with regional consultancy groups on top of that. But it again, I, I do appreciate the committee's support in me being a part of that program because we really have learned a lot together. And when you think about all of the challenges we've faced to be able to be with other superintendents and to go through those uncharted waters together, and we may not have all of the answers, but to be able to have a, a group that you can learn from and be able to add value as well and feel that we do based on what we've done in Foxborough. It has been a, a great experience and it's been, you know, a lot of work as far as time and effort, but it's definitely been well worth it. So that will complete at the end of this year. And although we were the largest cohort of superintendents so far to go through and continue to be, it is nice to still see so many people that are actively involved. The second goal, which is the student learning goal, which is to enhance the capacity of the Foxborough Public Schools to address issues of equity and inclusivity, including student achievement, access and school connectedness and disproportionality. So that is something as we've heard, I, I won't spend a lot of time there because we've talked a lot about that. But it really is a, a focus to where we put together a team and we have different levels that Dr. Mello and I are on along with Karen Fraser. She represents the middle school. Diana represents the high school and Kate Campbell represents the elementary. And so we've been working through these seminars that is a professional development opportunity to focus on equity and how we can then take the information that we learn from there and our team and then explore issues related to racism and society and schools and examine our own district's response. So that's an ongoing seminar that we're on. It's an hour and a half that meets like every other week in the, in the late afternoon. So that's been nice to have that addition and it'll be work that will continue to help us with the other work that we're doing. Writing a, a grant here most recently for focusing on disproportionality with our students. That's again, it's a little bit of extra funding through the Department of Ed and any money that we can get, we'll write the grant for it. So we do that to be able to analyze any of our groups and see if we're seeing performance of different student groups that we are surprised by and what are we going to do to address that? And as part of the tiered focus monitoring this year, which is every six years, we go through a coordinated program review with the Department of Education, and that's changed. And now it's geared focus monitoring and the English language learner piece of that is we had to conduct a self assessment. So I was very hands on with that self assessment and really digging much more into the data. So when Dr. Mello and I were talking about the top five languages, I'm like, I can tell you right off the top of my head, the top five languages. And if they've been the same for the last three years. So but it, that, that's the other part that I, I'd love to have that opportunity to still be at that level and work so closely with so many others and have a firsthand knowledge of where our students are. The third goal, district improvement, which was our planning for success. We've talked about that. We've kind of put that on hold with that, that team. But again, that's the strategy for district improvement is really continues to drive our work going forward. The fourth goal under district improvement, which is to provide leadership guidance and support to everyone through this unprecedented global health crisis. I think you've heard a lot about that, particularly under what I'm proud of and really working hard on. So I won't spend any more. So I won't spend any more time in that particular area. And then the last one is the Borough Project. And we've mentioned that we have closed out phase two, other than obviously punchless kinds of things. But really excited that kindergarten and second grade are in their new spaces, first grade classrooms are completed at this point, but we haven't moved them into those because we're wanting to make sure that we have the bathrooms, not too far away from our first graders and in the middle of completing those grade level bathrooms in that area. So attending those monthly meetings as far as the school building committee and the exciting part honestly is being able to walk through the classrooms and to see the kids and the teachers so happy in their new spaces and they're beautiful. So, and they're so conducive to learning, which there was so much thought put into that. And we're making great progress there and really excited for it to be completed for next school year.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions from the committee on that? Yeah, guess it's none. Well, Dr. Bertos, thanks again for all of this. I, I, I know the opportunity for you to, to update where, where you're at for, for your efforts very personally and as you guide and lead. But also this information is so valuable to our school district as a whole, to show where your focus and leadership is taking us as a district. So thank you for that. Great. Um, all good. No more questions from anyone? I don't see any. I, I good. I think we're good to go. Um, I think we're on the final topic, other matters. Anyone? Tina, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I usually have something, but I happened to see this last week that the sign outside the Taylor School said, congratulations to Mrs. Fuller on her retirement. So I wanted to congratulate Edna Fuller, our, our longtime school nurse at the Taylor. I know I had two boys who were frequent flyers in Mrs. Fuller's office. And she did a lot for our family and many, many others over the course of her, I don't know how many years in Foxborough, 20 that I've been here.
Yes, 20.
Yeah. So thank you to Edna. That was my thing for tonight.
Nice. Anyone else?
Can I just piggyback on, on Tina and with Edna as far as retiring? So she was like 44 years total, but 20 over at the Taylor. And we had full, Mike Stanton, the principal over there had full staff and student assembly for her on her last day, which was the Friday before vacation. And Jay Barrows came on both call. We did it twice as far as with cohort A in the morning and cohort B in the afternoon. And he read the citation proclamation for her. And what we learned through that is that they went to high school together and graduated from high school. We did not know that either. So it was just such a special kind of standoff for her. And, um, you know, the, the, the kids all had different poems that they had written and read to her. So we wish her the very best in the next chapter of her life.
Thank you. Well said. Perfect. Wow. How interesting.
That's fabulous. That's great. That's great.
Anyone else? Dr. Mello? And then I'll go Brent.
I would have rather ended on Mrs. Fuller, so I apologize. But as Dr. Bertos mentioned earlier, our kindergarten registration is open. And I just wanted to mention that on our website, we do have a kindergarten information page dedicated to our incoming kindergarten parents that has all the information that parents would need to know about what forms you need, how to register, what our screening is like, all of sort of those, those quick things. So if you look on any of our webpages, you see some children's hands that are dipped in paint. That is the link to our kindergarten information site. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Brent, did you have a?
No, I just want to underscore something I had said earlier and close on the fact that that the number of people I know in education in different states around the country, different regions is shocking and perhaps a testament to the fact that I can never settle on one place to be. However, I will say that like the number of friends and former colleagues that I've had who are facing this month with trepidation, nervousness and uncertainty, because they literally have not been in school all year. They've been remote all year. Um, is shocking to me. And, and, and the, like the words of encouragement that, you know, me and other educators in Foxborough, I'm not an educator in Foxborough currently, but, but have been able to throw them to say, look, it's fine. You'll be okay. You will be okay is, is striking. And I just, that's all preamble saying again, because I've said it twice tonight, how grateful I am for the dogged determination of the Foxborough School District for, uh, basically just clamping their, their teeth and their hearts onto the notion that our kids should be in school and we will do the hard work early. We will make August and most of September and parts of October terrible for admin, just to make it happen, simply to make it happen. Because as Dr. Baris had said early on, it's all about momentum and getting in the schools. And so anyway, it's just an extra thank you that I wanted to throw in at the end because seeing the anxiety of educators around the country that, that I'm close to, that, 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 the fact that she was right, like the momentum matters, getting in early matters. If you start out, the momentum, the impetus is to stay out. And, and it was hard. It was so hard. And I didn't do anything for it except vote for it. But like, I mean, the, 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 this district did it. And, and I, anyway, I just want to throw my kudos to the district because, um, it's showing benefits now. And that you hear the recommendations come out from the CDC, kids need to be in school more, or you hear that, that Desi is counting up hours and hey, holy cow, we make most of them. Uh, and it's just a quick tweak to get to the hours that they want. And anyway, I just want anybody listening, watching now or later to know that the work that the district put in now is paying dividends hugely. As compared to so many other places in the country. So anyway, thanks.
Well done. Well done, Brent. Thank you. And I was going to end with the same thing, just a quick thank you. Uh, when I was in, uh, in the schools for those, those, those many years, I always found the halfway point of the year is like a mark, you know, where we would do mid-years and then we'd be stepping into the second half of the year. So I just wanted to thank all three of you that are on the call, Dr. Bertos, Dr. Mello and Mr. Yuchna. It's been a, um, a challenging few months for, for that first half of the year, but we've now, we've turned the corner, have we not? And we're now moving towards the end of this, this coming school year. So thanks for being there for this first half of the year, making the first half of the year happen. It's been a difference in Brent, you said it very, very well. Um, we started off, you know, in, in a, in a real decent trajectory to get us to where we are today still. So we'll keep going. So thank you. A move to adjourn by someone? Just, I'll take a hand or anything? Brent, move to adjourn second?
A second.
Tina? And I guess I'm going to do a roll call adjournment. I'm not sure we remembered that. Brent, I'll go backwards. Brent?
Uh, yeah, hi.
Michelle? It looked, it looked like, it looked like, hi, Rob. Hi, Tina?
Hi.
And me as well. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good evening. Thank you all.